It is almost exactly six o'clock, so time for the regular meeting of the City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission for December 2020. And I'll call it to order. And we'll do a roll call first, as we always do.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. Height is absent. Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here.
I would like a motion to excuse Mr. Height.
One second.
And I have a second. We'll do that by general consensus. Thank you. Agenda approval. Any additions, corrections, changes? I think we have one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If you go down to five public hearings, A and B, it's actually PUD 20-2 is unison, and PUD 20-1 is the creek stop. We won't change the order of anything other than the two numbers. So it'd be PUD 20-2 and 20-1.
Okay, so same four, just we rotate the two numbers.
Right.
On the first two.
I just want to make sure.
Got it. Everything else, we're still good on?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. With that out of the way, we will approve the minutes from last month's meeting, the four November meeting. Any additions, corrections, changes? Gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the November Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, a second.
And I have a second, and we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Okay, this evening's agenda, we have four public hearings, a decision item and a discussion item. So without further ado, we'll start with the first public hearing. Before we go into the public hearing, just a quick review. The first, we'll read the case, then the applicant will give us a presentation on what they have in mind, then the staff will give its report, then we will open it up to the public for comment, whether you are speaking against it, in favor of it, or just have questions. We'll ask you to limit yourself to three minutes, so we aren't here all evening. And if there are folks that think they need more than three minutes, if someone else will give them their three minutes, we'll let you go all the way to nine, but I think you can cover it in three. Once everyone has had a chance to speak, we'll see if there's any written input, and then close the public hearing. We will discuss it and make a decision. So, fire away with our first one. That's the Unison Industries rezoning.
This is case number PUD 20-2 on an application filed by Unison Industries LLC, 2455 Dayton-Zina Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio 45434. The application requests approval to rezone 53.483 acres from RP1 Research Park to an IPUD industrial plan unit development. The property is located on the west side of I-675, north of Research Boulevard. Further described as Book Two, Page Five, Parcel Two on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here representing the applicant?
Good evening. My name's Jeff Morris. I'm the Chief Manufacturing Engineer with GE Aviation, representing Unison Industries tonight. So our intent currently is, we reside in the Beaver Creek town, or general Beaver Creek area. We have approximately seven rooftops that we operate under. The intent to better serve our customers is to consolidate those manufacturing efforts into one rooftop to the plot of land previously described. With this, our general manufacturing processes are light-to-medium industrial. We make components for jet engines that supply commercial, military, and marine industrial equipment. So the, sorry, so the intent is for a manufacturing facility of approximately 280,000 square feet. The manufacturing space will house general manufacturing, as well as a technology development center. This area and square footage would be utilized for next-generation manufacturing techniques or next-generation parts used on jet engines and specific aircraft and airframes. That location would be, with this building, we would have opportunity for potential expansion in the future, should the industry, obviously given the COVID circumstances, potentially see an uptick, which we have our fingers crossed that it happens sooner than later. So with that, we plan to access, two to three access points off of Research Boulevard to accommodate both the employee base, which we're looking in the general area, about 400 employees in general, and handling about 30 commercial vehicles per day for shipping, receiving, and such.
Great, thank you. Our staff report?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PUD 20-2. It's the Unison GE, and this is the rezoning phase of the PUD process. Just to give an overview of the PUD process, in case, you know, just for the viewers' idea of what the process is, you know, it's a two-phase process, rezoning, and that's what we're here for this evening, to get the uses and setbacks established, and potentially access points. And then a second phase is the specific site plan stage. That usually comes a month or two in advance, and that's where we talk specifically about architecture and parking spaces and stormwater detention and things like that. So this rezoning phase, the first phase, is more the 30,000-foot level of the general idea of what they want to do. So again, this is PUD 20-2. It's the rezoning of approximately 53 acres, 53, 54 acres, within the Miami Valley Research Park. Right now, it's rezoned RP1 Research Park, and the applicant's looking to rezone it to an industrial PUD, industrial plan unit development, to construct a large-scale, high-tech manufacturing business, as the applicant stated earlier. You could give a better idea of what Unison, Unison GE is actually doing. Project's located, again, within Miami Valley Research Park on the western edge of Beaver Creek. It's this 53 acres, 53, 54 acres here, that's northwest of where I-675 crosses over Research Park, or Research Boulevard. It's about a half a mile, to a third of a mile, west of where Research Boulevard intersects with Grange Hall Road. The shape is kind of an odd lot shape that has about 1,400 feet of frontage on Research Park and about 3,000 feet of frontage, though not accessible frontage, but just, you know, visibility on 675 and the 675 ramp. And it tapers off into a point in the northern end of the property. About two-thirds of the property is currently wooded, and then about a third of the property is a field out here in front, and then a field out here in the middle. And then there's a slight, there's a tiny little bit of cleared land out along the Research Park right-of-way. Again, this kind of highlights where the wooded area versus the cleared area versus the right-of-way clearage. Again, the property is rezoned currently RP1, general manufacturing. If you go through all the list of allowed uses in our zoning code, there's nothing that specifically states, you know, high-tech aviation aircraft manufacturing. So we have to go back and, okay, what category fits? And the only one that we could get to fit was general manufacturing. And that is a permitted use within I-2 districts. Now, we didn't want to rezone it to an I-2 because there's quite a few uses that, you know, for I-2 uses that we didn't want to see there, such as feedlots, or slaughterhouses, or the like, especially within the Research Park. So what we're proposing is to keep all the RP1 uses, carry them over into the PUD, and then add general manufacturing to it. This is still, this will be a PUD, so there will be, you know, controls and input as to the design of the building, and setbacks of the building, and things of the like. But what we're proposing is, keep all the uses that they have now, just add general manufacturing as a permitted use. We didn't go the CPUD route because you can't have industrial uses in a CUPUD, but in an IPUD, you can have commercial uses. So we went the opposite way, which is why it's an IPUD, which we haven't done very often. In terms of surrounding, A1 is to the south, and that is a wooded area, and then there's I-1 to the south, which is Greater Dayton Construction Group. To the east is, again, 675. That goes the entire length of the eastern property line, and then US-35 is to the north of that. And then along the entire eastern property line is A1 property, but it's the Walnut Grove Country Club. In our land use plan, this entire area is highlighted purple, which designates high-tech manufacturing, research and development, light industrial, and high-tech manufacturing. So based on just the reading of the land use plan, we don't have industrial-only categories in our land use plan, so this is compatible with what we had in general for the area. There is a VPA overlaid on, within the entire property. However, that, all that, the text in the land use plan just describes the geography. It didn't lay any constraints or conditions on development of this property. Again, this property is located in the Miami Valley Research Park, which is over 1,200-acre multi-jurisdictional, public-private partnership development that spans both Beaver Creek and Kettering. It was started in 1984 for the purpose of businesses just as, like Unison. So, you know, this is a good fit for the park. It's a good fit for Beaver Creek. It's a good fit for the area, and it's a good fit on our land use plan. The applicant stated, did a good job of stating what Unison did, so I won't go through all of this. But again, they make engines with electrical and mechanical systems. They're high-tech manufacturing. A few of the conditions in the resolution for your consideration, again, we're just proposing to add general manufacturing to the existing uses. We are proposing a 100-foot buffer along the western property line. You can see it kind of highlighted that in blue, and that will go all the way from the north to the south property line. That acts as two, for two reasons. One is to help buffer the golf course, to separate industrial use with the existing golf course. But also, in the future, should we look to have a public road going through this property that does, you know, reserve some land where that public road could go in the future. But mostly, it's there to provide a separation of the industrial with the country club to the east. Now, there are five conditions in your resolution. Again, four said at architecture, specific access points will be located at the specific site plan stages, because you don't want to put those in the legislation, because it might change based on when they get further in the engineering of the project. But staff does recommend approval of this applicant's request. I think it's a good fit, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And as usual, one of the very complete reports that makes it easier for us. Okay, folks, it being a public hearing, if you wish to speak in favor, against, or simply ask questions, please step forward and read your name off and your address, and have your three minutes. Don't everybody crowd at once. Last chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll start to my left.
Mr. Chair, I have no questions.
Okay, good enough. I'll move to my other side then.
Yeah, I just had one question for staff, just real quick. The 100-foot buffer, so in order to be able to plan for a future road, is the applicant, is the city okay with, do we add an additional easement to the east there that would allow, because I mean, 100-foot buffer would be, an easement to the east, because the turn truck traffic, if you're going to put in a road to get a 70-foot truck and trailer to put aggregate or anything else down, you're going to have turnaround issues and things. I mean, would there be any?
If they did connect in the future, they would have to have their own drive apron that would be wide enough to accommodate their trucks turning in if they needed that.
I'm not talking about their trucks. I'm talking about for the City of Beaver Creek. Could we put a condition, we could get like another 50-foot easement into that buffer? Or do we even have an easement on that?
There's no easement. And if we did, if we did construct a public right-of-way, that would be, we would end up acquiring the land underneath it. It would be public right-of-way. So there wouldn't be a need for an access easement. I understand what you're saying, but we don't have a road that's 150 feet wide of...
We're not acquiring it now. We would have to.
We would have to acquire it. I think that's...
Right. This is more of a placeholder at this point.
Yeah.
What power does the city have after this process would go through if they wanted to acquire that land? Is there any?
Eminent domain.
Just imminent domain?
We could do imminent.
So we'd have to go after the property and pay, I mean, there's...
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, right now, I mean...
Is there a way to put a first right of refusal, or some sort of?
No.
Lock it into a...
Right now, the zoning wouldn't allow anything to go on it anyways. It wouldn't be allowed any construction. Anything except landscaping is the only thing you could put within a 100-foot buffer.
So they would have no value in the land at that point, because it's just, they can't build on it?
The value would be the city having to buy it later.
Right, right. Okay, that was, that was my own, oh, the wooded areas. I know we're going to get into SSP, but any sort of indication from the applicant on, you know, we saw it's, what, about two-thirds wooded right now, what they kind of expect to take down? I mean...
That was a conversation early on, because I know that, you know, we want to see as many trees saved as possible.
Yeah, 100%.
And so does the applicant. You know, they want their own privacy back there, so they're going to do their best to maintain as many trees as possible. Obviously, they've got to get in and out of the site, and get utilities in and out of the site, but they want to maintain trees just like we do.
Okay, yeah, and I know that's coming in SSP.
Nothing has been quoted, nothing, we don't, we didn't want to put a regulation on X percent needs to be saved.
Sure, no, I totally get it. I just was more curious as to what the plans, you know, they...
They have expressed the same level of appreciation.
Okay, that's good. Then that's great. That's an awesome neighbor to have, then. So that's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Burkett.
No questions? Just to go further on the, on this buffer zone.
Sure.
That's one of those pieces of property that could be a key in terms of connecting the north part of Beaver Creek with the south part of Beaver Creek. We have few enough connections as it is. So I would, I've been waiting for this property to come up so that, to make sure that sometime in the future, we can add a road. And I think the applicant is going to realize that it's a lot shorter access to US-35 from the north than it is from the south.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, you've got Dayton-Zina-Linden right up there.
It might, yeah, it might.
It's just, the challenge is going to be, once you get north at this point, that's all private property.
Right.
And that's, and we cut off the corner of that golf course, so that's, that's the other challenge.
Sure, understood.
But if we don't do it now, we may lose it.
We do want to reserve this land for the future.
Exactly. We've had situations like this before in the city, where we put a placeholder in, and then sooner or later, we were glad we did.
Right.
So I'm glad you put that in. Other than that, everything looks good. Gentlemen, any further questions of either the applicant or the, I do have one for the applicant, if you would, just a quick one. Being a, you're a manufacturing engineer, the fabrication you all are doing there, you would refer to really as light industry rather than heavy industry. I'm just thinking about the neighbors, even though they're no residential anywhere nearby, it's neither going to be noisy, smoky, or smelly.
That is correct.
It's pretty clean operation.
It is.
Mostly fabrication, what, like aluminum, stainless steel, things like that?
And super alloys, nickel-based, but yes.
Okay, okay, good. That's all I need to know. Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, further questions? Then I want a motion. Please.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve PUD 20-2 with five conditions.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, a second.
And I have a second. Let's read the roll, please.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, 4-0, and we'll be looking forward to seeing the specific site plan soon. And welcome to Beaver Creek again. Okay, our next public hearing is PUD 20-2, creek stop rezoning. Sorry, 20-1. I can't read my own writing.
This is case number PUD 20-1 on an application filed by Stephen Daniel Sowards of 1019 Rainbow Court, Ranington, Florida 34212. The applicant requests approval to rezone 0.9425 acres from I-1 Light Industrial to a CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development. The property is located at 1150 Old Mill Lane, further described as Book Five, Page Seven, Parcel Thirty-One on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have an applicant here?
It's his brother.
Close enough. Are you the one that's going to do the presentation?
No. He's on the phone, if you want to, if you want to say, ask any questions.
Okay.
I just want to be present.
Okay, well, that's fine. If we have questions, we'll, we'll ask away. So I'll ask for staff report then.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. The 40's an application requesting approval to rezone approximately nine-tenths of an acre from industrial I-1 to CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development. The purpose and the intent of this application for this rezoning is to, in the future, convert this, the existing building to some type of convenience store and/or ice cream shop that would be focused towards bike path traffic. So the parcel under discussion is located just north of the Creekside Trail, south of the U-Haul Moving and Storage. As I stated, it's nine-tenths of an acre and currently contains an approximately 2,200 square foot building. The building is currently being used as a auto repair business, which is a permitted use within the I-1 Industrial Zoning District. So as I stated, the property is zoned I-1. There is a small pocket of I-1 located in this area just north of the bike path, which was previously the railroad track, so I would imagine that's why this pocket is there. There, the I-1 to the north, which is the U-Haul Moving and Storage, then you have I-1 as well, an IPUD for the mill just to the east, and then everything surrounding it and to the north, all within the Dayton-Zina corridor, is zoned B2, B3, or B4, and then you have some commercial PUDs, which all have underlying B2 zoning as well. So this rezoning request is consistent with the surrounding zoning of the properties. This property is also located within the special flood hazard area, and it is subject to inundation of the 1% annual flood, which used to be called the 100-year floodplain. If the applicant does move forward with this project and proposes to either renovate the existing building, substantially renovate the existing building, or replace the building with a new building, they will have to meet the requirements of our flood reduction ordinance, which in this case would either be floodproofing the building or elevating the building above base flood elevation. The property on our land use plan is designated as community commercial and office, and/or office. Should this rezoning be approved, they would have to follow through with the specific site plan before being able to begin any type of construction, and the, this proposed zoning change is compatible with our approved land use plan. So this proposed zoning change does assist staff in being able to limit the number of uses that are allowed on the property. So kind of, as Randy talked about in his previous case, you know, the industrial zoning district allows for a lot of uses that are very intense, that aren't really as compatible with the community business district, or as, you know, with the other uses within the Dayton-Zina corridor. So by rezoning this property to a commercial PUD, what we would do is limit the number of uses that we feel are not compatible with the surrounding uses, aren't compatible with, you know, the size of the property, just with it being less than an acre, it does limit what can be put on there substantially. So the uses that we're proposing are the basic B2, B2 uses, which are mostly general retail and office, and then we've just excluded a few uses that wouldn't be compatible with that area, that wouldn't fit size-wise, like nursing homes and daycare facilities. And so those have been excluded. But all other uses that are permitted within a B2 zoning district would be permitted, and any of the uses that are conditionally allowed within a B2 zoning district would require approval from the Planning Commission before they could, before anything could be approved there. Any future building setbacks, anything like that, will come at the specific site plan stage, but staff is recommending approval of this request, subject to the conditions in the attached resolution. And if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
Thank you. Answered a lot of our questions already. Since this is a public hearing, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, so if you wish to ask questions, speak in favor or against, come right on up and take your three minutes, and we'll be more than happy to hear from you.
Good evening, sir. My name's Chris Martin. I live at 1088 Old Mill Lane, which is just across the creek from there, and I'm not a hostile witness. I just am looking for some information here. So I have like four questions. Do you want me to just give all four of them and then step out?
Fire away.
Okay. Like, in terms of open hours, is this going to be a 24-hour open business? And then parking, right now on Old Mill Lane, there's no parking allowed, and there's not a, I don't know how their site will look for parking and all, but that may become a problem, just a comment. Also, with beer or liquor sales, I don't, again, I don't know what all they'll be having, but that's a thing. And also about the creek flooding, I don't think people realize, you know, once in 100 years, it floods. Every year, it gets worse because of the building that goes around Beaver Creek, and it all dumps into that creek, and it can get pretty hellacious on a rainy day. I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Hall. I live at 1112 Old Mill Lane, and I just, I had submitted a written notice, hopefully that you had received that. I just want to raise a couple of issues.
You got it.
One is, even though you've described everything as industrial and zoned appropriately to every side except across the creek, everything, 12 acres, on the north, on the north side of the creek, south side of the creek, is residential. And so that property has not been identified in your analysis, from what I've heard. We own 600 feet along the creek between the bike path and the water that runs down, another 200 feet over towards the private property. There's two residences on the location, and right now, the Old Mill Lane is a spur. It's a dead end. Traffic is very high because of the bike path, with both people attempting to park, turning around, nosy-nellies that want to know who's living back there. And so my concern is, as you increase the flow of traffic from a retail establishment on the property under question, you're just going to increase the flow of traffic. The intersection at Old Mill and Fairfield is horrendous. We don't turn left on Friday night, so adding more traffic to that situation just compounds the problem. The only consistency I've seen on that site is having something like the car service. Everything else I see in that strip has, on a retail perspective, has failed. And so we're looking at advanced auto parts, brand-new building, new parking lot, lasted maybe three or four months. Panera's is no longer, it's not there yet. Friendly's was there, and Idol for about 10 years or so. And so everything we see that turns into a retail type of establishment in this strip has a very short life, and so I would, I would suggest that you look at, at the additional paving of the situation, the paving of the, of the ground, because it does increase the flow of water into the creek, and that creek is horrendous. We have pictures, if you ever want to see a flood in action, and this was just within the last year. So all the paving coming from the Kettering side down towards Beaver Creek flows into the little Beaver Creek, and the surge from the rain is pretty large. The property you're describing is sort of a water retention issue, and that also, as it rains, it's a low-lying area, and so I would, I would be concerned with paving that area as to where that water is going to go. Without the creation of a retention or detention pond, I'm not sure how you could redirect that flow of water. So having said all that, I would just ask you... So having said all that, I, I would just ask you to read what I've submitted and take into consideration that, you know, there is a residence and, and there is some property owners that are concerned about the utilization of the property. And the bike path has been a pleasant recreational facility for the community, but it does increase the flow of people. And the littering and the access to the creek through our property has been a concern. We do not have a fence that would protect and keep the property intact away from the people. So any increase of utilization in the form of a ice cream shop or a stop-and-go would only increase sales to the bike path participants. And I don't know of a bike that has a trash bag on it. So if you buy something there and you're on a bike, then that litter is potentially coming back to my property. And so I just ask you, once again, to be concerned of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Don't be shy. Last chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Looks like it's me first.
Yeah, you're first.
I'm gonna take a page out of Mr. Chair's book from about a year and a half ago when we were doing the dispensary. So I do have a, a question for staff. So this is currently zoned I-1, correct?
That's correct.
So today, what types of business could legally move in without any sort of, without coming to Planning Commission or City Council with just a simple occupancy?
So any, any business that is permitted in the I-1 zoning district, I don't have my code with me.
Is there any way we could put that up there so everybody can see what could go in there without any interference from, from government?
Well, I mean, while he's doing that, if, do you want me to go ahead and address Ms. Martin's questions?
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to ask, I know the hours and parking, a lot of this stuff is gonna be addressed at the site-specific stage.
Right, yeah, those are items that, we haven't gotten to the point to even discuss those. But those, well, items like hours and beer and liquor sales, obviously, we can add conditions for that. As far as parking goes, we have minimum parking requirements. There are obviously gonna have to put in a new parking lot, curbing, gutter. All, all of that will be required. And then as far as flooding and water runoff, as I stated, they're in the floodplain. They have, do have to meet floodplain requirements. But also, they do have to detain the water that will be created by additional paving. And that will be, because the site is so small, in the form of an underground vault. So, yeah, that, that, that will be a requirement. And as you guys know, when you have new development, you can't increase the amount of, of water runoff. And in most cases, it, it alleviates situations. So, so it, the, the site, by improving it, as far as flooding goes and water runoff is, will be better than, definitely better than what it is now.
And I'm assuming that vault, since it's, it isn't a floodplain, would have to be larger than normal?
More than likely. So they're gonna have to account for, I mean, they-
So during normal rains, they actually would retain more water than a typical site that was required?
I would think so. And, you know, with the, the water table being higher there and everything, all of that is, it's, they're gonna, the, and, and the applicant's fully aware. Like, when we began talking about this, I let them know, you know, you're, you're in a floodplain. This, this becomes a lot more complicated than just developing the property. You have to-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you, you have to accommodate for all of this water runoff. You have to accommodate for, you know, our floodplain regulations. So this is, this is gonna be a much, much more intensive process than just, you know, let's, let's pave this and put up a building. So.
And does this property sit higher or lower than the, than the creek? I mean, I'm assuming it sits higher.
It sits a little bit higher, but it, it's, it sits below the base flood elevation as, you know, as it is now. I think on our... So it's a, I mean, it's at eight, so the property's roughly at around 832 feet above sea level. And our code requires that a building be at least two feet above that base flood elevation, that 833. So it'd have to be around 835. I don't know where the building is now, but a lot of those buildings in that area were sitting below that anyway.
Were sitting below that.
Yeah, so if you look at the Grismer Tire across the street, you can see it's sitting higher. It's a newer building. The Beaver Creek Station, how high that sits, they meet our floodplain regulations. So what the regulations require, if they're not building a new building, is that they have to make that, that part of the building that sits below has to be floodproofed.
Okay.
Because obviously, it, it would be very difficult to elevate the building at that point.
Have you had initial discussions with the applicant regarding Mr. Hall's? I mean, I don't know if he's been to, to the city and addressed these directly, or if this was the first correspondence, but if, if there's been any discussions with the applicant as far as signage and some sort of-
We, we haven't. I, I spoke, I spoke to Mr. Hall very briefly when he let me know that he, you know, he wanted to send in a letter. And he, he kind of let me know some of the, some of the, his concerns. And obviously, I've been thinking about it, and it's, it's, we definitely need to take something into consideration. I'm not sure how much, how much of that is still public road going into his driveway and where at least we could maybe put up some signs as far as no parking, no trespassing, that kind of thing, to be able to, to maybe stop people from driving down to see what's going on, or parking, you know, parking there if Beaver Creek Station is, is full. But there are definitely things that we can do, at least on the, on the public side of the street, to, to alleviate some of his concerns as far as, you know, having people trespassing on his property.
And listen, they're in an A-1 currently now, the, the 12 acres that we were just talking about.
The 12 acres? I'm not sure if they're A-1 or if they're residential. It's a little bit confusing there, because when we redid the overpass, everything moved.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We took a lot of property, like, you know, if you, I don't know why it's not working, but, I mean, you can see there's, there's a B-2 that's pointing to the middle of, of the road. So, I mean, that, there was a B-2 property there before. It's not there anymore. So I believe that their property is, is zoned residential and it's a remnant. You know, originally, they were, you know, down there closer to 35, and the overpass was put in and everything was kind of reconfigured, and you've got leftovers of parts and, and that, so.
Um, I will let Mr. Chair read off when it's his turn, the, the, the uses. The reason I bring this up is, we've had a similar case where it was, it was zoned for heavier use, and we were trying to actually downzone it. And at the end of the three or four hours of, of a public comment, the, the comment was made, it was already zoned for heavier, heavier traffic, heavier use, heavier industrial use, that we would absolutely have no legal right to stop or intercede on. This actually does give us an opportunity to downzone it, to make it more friendly for the community. Because I think a great upgrade, but I totally hear your guys' concerns on, on the issues you have being adjacent landowners and, and absolutely that, that the trail's probably a double-edged sword for you guys. I definitely understand that. So, yeah. So that's what I had. I appreciate your time.
Yeah. I mean, I can't get the projector to work, but if you want me to just read you a few of the uses-
Yeah, just so, again, just to try to lay everybody-
That are permitted, so-
What could go there tomorrow.
Yeah, so currently, in, in the I-1 zoning district, you have amphitheaters, animal daycares, automotive wrecking junk or salvage yards, wholesale bakeries, bowling alleys, breweries, building supply stores, carpet and rug cleaning plants, catering services, cold storage, commercial greenhouses, contract construction sales, construction and storage, dry cleaning and dyeing, farm supply, funeral services, crematoriums, glass and window repair, industrial research labs, junkyards and salvage yards, kennels, catteries, landscape contractors.
Did you say a cattery, by the way?
Cattery, yeah.
Okay, I might need to review what the heck that is.
It's a kennel for cats.
I think it's a kennel for cats.
I just learned something new today.
Yeah, lumber yards, machine shops, general manufacturing. So a lot of much more intense uses, obviously, are permitted in the industrial district.
Yeah, and that's, that was the kind of point. I mean, Mr. Mr. Chair brought that up a couple of years ago on a, on a big case. And that has stuck with me, that this actually, in the end, if we do this correctly, would be better off for, for the adjacent properties, for sure. That is all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I think my fellow Planning Commissioner did a great job.
Okay.
No further questions?
I have a question for staff. So it seems to me like the, the existing building is a good size. I mean, they do, they're, they do a lot more than ice cream there. Right now, they fit a few cars in there. So is there a possibility with a new or retrofitted building going in, is there a possibility to expand upon the parking spots that are required to try to alleviate some of the congestion that may go down Old Mill Road?
Yeah, there definitely, there is not enough parking there now, the, the parking area that they have, to accommodate a convenience store. Our parking requirement will be significant, will be significantly more than that. So they'll have to, they will have to put in some, some more parking. I don't, I mean, I don't think they have very many parking spaces now, but, but, yeah.
Could a condition be to exceed the, the city's requirement for parking in that area?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't wanna do that now, because I think we wanna look at, you know, what they're proposing. But in the specific site plan stage, I think when we get to the point where we see what they wanna do with the building, how much of the building they're actually using for customers, if we want to, you know, go above the requirement, we can definitely do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, personally, I would envision a lot of the traffic would come from foot traffic.
That would be the hope, yeah.
At least in the summer, but maybe, you know, in the late fall, early winter, there'd be more, more car traffic. Mr. Hall had referenced in his letter about the conservation easement. And just to clarify, with council, there's, the city's not, the city's not supposed to enforce these private easements for trespassing and, and, correct?
Well, certainly, if it, if someone is violating the law, we would, the police could be brought in to violate the law with respect to the conservation easement. I'm, you know, assuming that the purpose was for a bike path. And again, if someone's littering, that, they could be, you know, charged with littering. But, you know, it's, we're not gonna otherwise, we're have to respond as, as we need to respond to things. So. And, and I, I'm not sure if that really falls directly in our jurisdiction also, because a number of those trails are actually maintained by other parties. And so I think that's also something we need to look at to see if it's being properly maintained. I, I, as I sit here tonight, I just don't know.
And then, one of the other concerns was potential litter being tracked down the trail. I don't recall any, besides the station, I, I don't recall any trash cans on the trail at all, provided by the city or the county or any of the, the other parks divisions.
I, I can't think of any either. I think, well, I mean, one of the things, one of the items that we always condition in our specific site plans is that trash be picked up on a regular basis, and that we have the right to require that it be picked up more often if, if, if it's not being, you know, if it's getting out of control. So one of the, one of the things that, that we could look at, and what we would more than likely look at, because the applicant has talked about maybe having an outdoor seating areas, having, you know, some trash cans closer to the bike path areas that people can drop off their trash, you know, en route back to the bike path. Other than that, I don't, I think people, if, if litter is being placed on the bike path, they, I, I doubt that they would be doing it right on the property. They'd be doing it down the way. You know, after they finished their ice cream or whatever it was.
And I think that's the concern that Mr. Hall had expressed. Is there, because the conditions that we normally put in for picking up trash are only on property.
Yeah, it would be on the property. I, we couldn't make them go onto the bike path and, and pick up trash. We wouldn't be able to do that.
Correct. Okay. All right, thank you.
Is that it? I got a few questions for you and possibly for the applicant by phone. I don't remember how long ago we made that I-1, or if that was I-1 before my time.
I, I wanna say it was I-1 before the city was even incorporated.
I, I think it was too, because it's an odd little spot for industrial zoning. Is that parcel considered part of the Fairfield Road Carter?
The Dayton-Zenia Corridor, yes.
Okay.
It is, it is the last parcel within our Dayton-Zenia Corridor study area.
Okay, so, so it would have to not only go through the PUD process, but it would also go through the, the ASRA process?
Well, it wouldn't need to, because we would, the, the specific site plan essentially is the, the same process.
We'll do both. Okay.
Yeah, one or the other, yeah.
The, I, I think we've already covered about the impermeable surface. Just, just so you'll know, whenever we develop, whenever a parcel is either developed from scratch or redeveloped, if it was not meeting our, our runoff requirements, it has to at the development or redevelopment stage. It says, "You cannot exacerbate the runoff from a parcel by, by developing it or updating it or changing it." And, excuse me, it's been my experience that it almost always improves the, the water situation when a parcel develops or redevelops. Because then we can catch the, either the vacant parcel or a non-conforming use. We can catch it and make sure that our city engineer is, is happy with the, with the runoff situation. The, I'm hoping this would not be beer sales there. It's hard enough to ride a bicycle without having a few beers in your, in your belt. So, but this, these are things that can be conditioned as part of the, as part of the specific site plan. And I'm well aware of the creek flooding. But as long as a property owner meets our flood requirements and doesn't go into the Army Corps of Engineers floodplain, we have no choice but to approve. Now, what we're looking at, gentlemen, is zoning change only. You don't condition zoning. It's a zoning change only, and as has been pointed out, this is a downzoning from what I would consider to be kind of a, an appendix industrial zoning where it really doesn't, where it really shouldn't be. And that by changing the zoning downward to CPUD, we can really condition what goes there. It's been a auto repair shop as long as I can remember. So what's going on there now apparently doesn't seem to bother anybody. Yes, ma'am?
Just, sorry, just as a-
Oh, that's okay.
Back in the 70s, there was also a private home there, and I don't know if that was-
That was the old Zimmerman Station. I remember, there was a wooden, there was a wood house right on that site. And it either burned or got in such bad condition it had to be torn down.
Yeah, there were people living there before I graduated from high school. So we're talking like a century ago. So I think there used to be a family there, but I don't know if that's also their business.
Right. That, when that was torn down, then the auto repair shop was built. Staff, do you all know how far Old Mill Lane is still a public street? That, for those of you who haven't lived here for a while, that used to be North Fairfield Road. And the little bridge there, I know, is still city property, or it, it still belongs to the city because we repaired the, we, the city repaired the bridge.
So it's, I believe, our right-of-way ends here. So I'm not sure-
Who built the bridge?
Well, I know we-
I think we did, because-
We have some sort of, an agreement with when it was acquired, because of the-
Okay, so, so the, so the city's, the city's property line is actually north of the bridge.
Correct.
Then it would be perfectly, perfectly okay to put, to put signs up there that say "Private Drive", or even, I don't know, because they chained it off, as long as the fire trucks could get through it.
Yeah, that's, that's something we'd have to look at.
Yeah, that's what I mean. But if that's, if that's no longer a public road, then you're certainly within your rights to at least post private, private road signs. And I'd say that would be a smart thing to do. And for the applicant, are you all, and I realize this is early on, but are you all planning on operating year-round or seasonal during the bicycling season? And do you have any idea for hours yet?
In the best light, it would be-
Could you come up to the podium, please, so, so the folks at home can hear?
Steve, you there? Two people. Is that there?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right. All right, he has a question for you.
Good evening.
Hi. The, my first question is, are you, are you thinking of this as a seasonal operation when the bike trail is most active, or are you looking at a year-round operation?
A year-round operation.
Okay. Uh, do you have an idea for hours yet?
Hours of operation, I would suggest, would probably terminate in the evening by 10:00 PM at the latest.
Okay, so, so it would not be a 24-hour operation?
No, no, no.
I, I think, I think some of the concern, the traffic concern is if, if you were like a 7-Eleven store, where you operated either 24 hours a day or, or close to it, and were a, a convenience store, it's going to cause a lot of traffic into a, into a, an intersection that is kind of scary as it is now.
I understand.
So, okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll go into more of that when they start developing the specific site plan. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Gentlemen, that's all I've got. Did that engender any more questions on your part? Okay? Um, and remember, we are, we are doing a rezoning here alone, nothing, and nothing to do with what's going on the site or a specific site plan or anything else. Okay, I'd like a motion then, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 20-1. Um, yeah? No conditions.
No conditions, rezoning. Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I second.
And I have a second, okay? Can we read the roll, please?
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, 4-0, and we will see what happens with the specific site plan. Okay, two down, two to go. Um, we are now listening or looking at the CU-11-20 Empowered Community Services of Beaver Creek.
I believe staff is going to present this together.
Okay.
Is that correct? Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so this is case number PUD 96-4, conditional use 11-20, and PUD 96-4, specific site plan number five. On an application filed by Great Lakes Property Development LLC, 4205 East Lake Road, Sheffield Lake, Ohio 44054, the applicant requests conditional use approval to allow for an adult daycare and specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a 7,287 square foot facility on 1.5 acres. The property is located at 80 Harbert Drive, further described in book three, page 19, parcel 99, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you, and for, for the folks here in, both in person and, and listening on TV, we actually have two cases here. One is the conditional use, and the other is the specific site plan. The applicant has, has chosen to, to help fast-track this, to have us look at the conditional use, and if it is approved, then they will present a specific site plan, simply to save having to wait till next month to do the SSP. So, if the applicant is here, and I think I see him standing there in the back, actually several of them, standing there in the back, if you would be so good as to give us your report, and we'll go from there.
My name is, mission members, my name is Robert Kinnable. I live at 701 South Roosevelt Avenue in Columbus, Ohio, and with me is Nick Messera. And he, when he, when he steps up, he'll give you his address and his information. The applicant is Great Lakes Property Development, and we are, we intend to build a community-based support center for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. This center will, let me, oh, the, the contractor will be North Coast Design Build, which is an arm of Great Lakes, and the tenant, and, and Great Lakes will own the property, and the tenant will be Empowered Community Services. The building is certified, or the program, the agency, excuse me, is certified by the Ohio Department of Medicaid to provide these services. Let me explain to you what it does not do. This is not residential. There's nobody going to be living in this facility. It is open eight to five, Monday through Friday. Uh, there will be some activities there on Saturday. It will not be providing medical care. It will not be doing personal care, or grooming, or anything of that nature. It is a support center. Uh, it will be certified for 50 residents. However, on many days, there will not be that type of population, because people will be served in the community. That's the idea, is to get these folks to as many community activities as possible. As far as people coming to the center, there will be three vans. They'll be handicapped accessible. They'll be transporting people to the center, returning them to their houses, taking them to community activities as required. So it is a support center, and staff will be there to organize these activities. That's the whole purpose of what's going on here. It is not, as you would know, an adult daycare center. It's not that traditional mode. It's, it's a lot different in its concept and in its operation. Um, some of the programs that will be offered will be occupational therapy. The idea is some of these people might be employed. I have a Kroger's. I know who the bag folks are, men, men and girls, I see them every day. They came from some sort of program. People help them in many cases, and even, they need life care development, and they need the continuation of those services. They just can't, because of their intellectual and developmental disabilities, they just can't go out there and say, you're here, goodbye. They need on-care, ongoing care, and that's part of what this center will do. Um, there'll be social development, community volunteerism, and ask, access to community-based supports. People will bring their own lunches. They will not be served meals for those who will be coming to the center. I want to make that clear also. Um, Empowered Community Services operates two of these facilities, one in Englewood, one in Springboro, another one under construction in Fairfield. This is the way the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities and Ohio Department of Medicaid is going. Everything is community-based, services to be community-based, and for these folks to take advantage of as many community services as possible. And that's, that's how this program operates and how the existing programs, and this is all over the state, this just isn't here. This is happening in every county in Ohio. It's, it's what will be the wave of the future. So, if you have any questions about the program, I'll be glad to answer. Mr. Messera can answer any questions about the, about the site, about the building, et cetera.
Um, just wanted to touch base as well. We did have a pre-development meeting, conference call. Oh, sorry, Nick Messera, 27380 Cook Road. Um, so we did have a pre-development review conference call on, on November 16th. Uh, we made some adjustments as a result of that call. Um, on the plans, we identified one-way ingress and egress for the site which was asked for. Um, we've altered some of the material selections to reflect an LP Smart siding, which is similar to a Hardy board, which you guys requested in replace of the vinyl siding. Um, on the landscape plan, we created a shrub hydro on the north side of the parking lot to block vehicle headlights facing north. Uh, on the lighting plan, we utilized Ballard lighting in the parking lot, and we also got rid of some of the wall pack lighting to minimize light pollution, and we made sure they're all full cut-off shield fixtures as well. Uh, we updated the dumpster design to match the masonry of the building, as well as use the same matching LP Smart siding on the gate. And then, for some of the fire department concerns, we added a life safety site plan which shows the radiuses that we changed for the entrances to accommodate for the ladder truck. We indicated three hydrant locations, which each one has total building coverage less than 400 feet, which is the requirement, and we show all the passive egress on there as well. Uh, we've been in touch with the city and county engineering and the utility departments, and we have added the grading and utility plans, and also provided the storm water quality design. And then, I know I got Sandra the sign rendering and the location a couple days ago, I'm not sure if you guys got to see that yet, but should have that as well. So, um, that's it for that. Happy to answer any questions when you guys are done. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Before use, an application requesting conditional use approval as well as specific site plan approval for an approximately 70 to 200 square foot single-story building that would provide adult day programming services at 80 Harbert Drive. So because an adult daycare is a conditional use within PUD 96-4, the applicant is required to receive conditional use approval from the Planning Commission right prior to receiving um, approval of a specific site plan. So, you'll be hearing just one presentation, we have one staff report, that what I'm requesting is that you approve each of the resolutions if you choose to separately, so each one, if you choose not to approve the conditional use, we obviously wouldn't move forward with the specific site plan, but if you choose to approve the, the conditional use, then you would move forward to approving the resolution for the specific site plan. So the one and a half acre property under discussion is the last vacant site within PUD 96-4, and is located at the end of Harbert Drive. It has approximately 456 feet of frontage along Harbert Drive. Um, there are no plans at this time for any type of extension of Harbert Drive. Obviously, if the property to the east ever does develop, there may be discussions at that point to, to continue that road through there. As I stated, the property is zoned PUD 96-4. All of the properties across Harbert Drive are also located within that PUD. Uh, the property just to the south of this proposed location was located within PUD 96-4, but then was rezoned, uh, approximately a year ago in order to accommodate the, the new, uh, storage units that are currently under construction there. So the proposed building is a one-story, 7,287 square foot building. It's designed to be architecturally similar in appearance to a traditional schoolhouse. Uh, as shown in the renderings, uh, the structure will consist primarily of an engineered wood siding, which is similar to Hardy plank, that is used both vertically and horizontally. Uh, there's also a significant amount of, of brick that will be used along the front of the building and, and wrapped along the sides and, around the back as well. Building has high roof lines, uses shuttered windows, and at its tallest point, the roof is approximately 28 and a half feet. So the applicant, as he stated, we did request, uh, one-way circulation through the site just because of the, the width of the drive that was being proposed. So the applicant did put in one-way circulation. You have ingress to the, on the western side, and then egress along the east. Because most of the attendees of the daycare are picked up and dropped off, we're not going to see a lot of traffic coming into the site, with the exception of the employees, so just having one-way traffic in and out of the site like this isn't, isn't going to present any issues, and staff does not have a problem with that at all. Uh, the applicant is also proposing to construct a five-foot sidewalk along the entire frontage of Harbert Drive. Uh, that sidewalk will connect to the, the sidewalk that is currently under construction just to the south with those storage units. Um, as far as storm water management goes, there isn't a requirement to build a detention pond onsite because there is off-site detention just to the north here that is used for the entire PUD. The applicant will have to meet water quality standards, EPA water quality standards, and we will make sure that those requirements are met prior to issuing any zoning permits. As far as parking goes, uh, the zoning code requires one off-street parking space for every five persons under supervised care, plus one space for each employee, plus one space for each vehicle used for the business. Uh, the applicant did state that at their maximum, they'll be caring for 50 individuals and will have eight employees, and then also three vans, which brings the required parking total to 21 parking spaces, and that's exactly how many spaces they're proposing. Let me just fast forward here to the landscape plan. So the applicant is providing a significant amount of landscaping. As, as they stated, we did request additional landscaping along the north side of the parking lot to shield headlights from vehicles pulling into those parking spaces and those, that shrub row was provided as well. And the final landscape pan, plan will be reviewed and approved by the planning department prior to the release of the zoning permit. And then the applicant also did address the lighting, and, and we did have concerns with, um, wall pack lighting, a lot of times when buildings, when sites are, are lit only by lights that are on the building, there's a lot of excessive light spillover, and we didn't want to see that on the site. We do have some residential just to the north outside of the PUD. So, uh, what the applicant is proposing is to, to remove some of those wall pack lights, put in some wall sconces, and then is also, instead of doing, um, light poles within the parking lot, they're going to do the shorter ballards that don't put off as much light. They don't necessarily need, uh, as much lighting for the property because they are only in operation until 5:00 PM, but for safety purposes, obviously, we need to at least still have some, some minimum lighting, and we do have minimum lighting standards that, that they will need to meet as well. Uh, the applicant also brought up signage. I didn't include the signage in the packet just because it came in after the packets did go out, um, but we just added a, a basic condition that required that the ground sign be 25 square feet per side, no taller than six feet, to be consistent with the other signs that are located within that development. So staff is recommending approval of this request of the conditional use and the specific site plan as outlined in the attached resolutions, and if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearings.
Thank you. Nothing like knowing everything ahead of time. This is a public hearing, so if there is anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of, against, or simply ask questions, step right on up. You've been very patient.
Hello, hi, my name is Paulie Shabrow Scott, P-A-U-L-L-E-C-I-A. I am the owner of Acclaimed Senior Activities Center, and we are located at 3878 Indian Ripple Road. Um, I initially was given the information that it was a new adult daycare coming, so now learning that it's a day hab, it, both of those are completely different entities. Um, I was just concerned that, you know, you all moving in, it's not even a block away from where we are located, so it was a little disturbing at the time. However, I'm very excited to know that it will be a day hab. I do have several people who stopped by looking for those services, so I wouldn't mind networking with you all and giving you information, um, so that we can somehow work together as a team to support the, the clients and the seniors of Beaver Creek. Um, and I think that's all I have. I was just a little disturbed by it. We do, however, have two other day habs in Beaver Creek. I'm not sure if you all have conducted a, a market analysis, but there is one that is on Fairfield Commons, Fairfield Road, and it's the Goodwill Industries, so that one is still there. I'm not sure that they are open currently, um, and there is a second one that is located, um, Dynamic Senior Solutions, I think that's one, that Dayton-Zenia. So there are currently, that I'm aware of, two, um, adult day habs in the area, so within a 10-mile radius of where you all are planning on building, um, your institution there. Um, so just, just want to make you guys aware of that, and if we can be of any assistance to you all, we are here to help you as well and send clients and seniors your way. Thank you.
Serendipity at work? And considering the number of nursing homes that have been built in Beaver Creek, there seems to be a need for them. Some of us sooner than others. Um, are there any, anyone else wishing to speak on this particular, two public hearings that we're doing together? If not, I will officially close the public hearing.
Throw it to me first, please.
Go.
Um, I just needed to ask the applicant, um, are you in any way related to Great Lakes?
I just needed to ask the applicant, are you in any way related to Great Lakes Construction Group? Okay. I just needed to make sure I, my company does a lot of business with them, so I just wanted to make sure you weren't a sister company.
Different Great Lakes.
That was the only question that I had.
Okay, well, we'll scratch you off the list.
I had one question for staff. I know you said a lot of the people who will be using the facility will be dropped off, but do you feel that two handicap spaces are sufficient for the needs?
Yeah, I think two, two is good. Two meets, meets our zoning requirements. We actually did, we increased it for facilities like this in our, in our zoning code. So I think two, two should work for this site.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
I have one question for staff. So you note that the water retention, the EPA water quality standards have changed. Is that, is that dealing with the quantity that can be retained in the retention pond? Or so would they have to build another retention pond or?
No, they don't have to build another retention pond. They just have to, so that they can use the retention, detention pond to the north. There are just specific water quality requirements that they have to meet as well.
I can kind of answer that. It's, it's the size and the particulate and how dirty the water is that goes downstream into that holding. It's got to be quasi-filtered.
So the detention is large enough for everybody who's there?
Yes, yes, the detention is large enough for the entire site.
Okay.
We approved this originally back in 96. It was sized for the, the entire area being built out.
Correct.
And if, if this were, say, a repair shop, they would have to have some kind of filters to catch any oil or grease or anything before it went into the retention pond. That's what they're talking about.
Perfect. And then I, I have one question for the applicant. Just out, just out of curiosity, what kind of employees, trained employees do you guys have on site? Do you employ OTs, PTs? Is it?
Those services we will use in the community. But our staff are social workers, people who have been in this field for a long, long time. There could be occupational therapists there. It's a mixture of different people, but it, they're all, they're all trained people. And the Department of Medicaid requires a certain type of staffing level and qualifications for each employee depending on what they're doing.
All right, thank you. I was just curious. I appreciate it.
All done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for staff. We, it, it sounds like the, the primary way that folks will be getting to, not, not the employees, but the, the clients will be getting there will be by bus.
That's correct.
So the, we're not talking about any problem with traffic flow?
No.
It's not going to really increase the number of vehicles turning into and out of. We already have a turn lane there, correct?
That's right. Yeah, the applicant stated that the, the only time anyone would be coming to the site or leaving the site in a private vehicle would be if, you know, they have to leave for an appointment or, but everyone comes and goes on, on the, in the vans.
Okay. And for the, for the parking lot lighting, I realize they're on bollards, but very often we'll have that, the 25% where they have, have to cut off all the lighting except for 25% after, like within two hours after closing. I didn't see that as a condition. Do we need, or is it? Did I miss it? Oh, she gonna, she gonna make me look bad?
No, I believe I put it in there.
They can find it first.
Maybe not.
No, it's not in there.
Nope, you're right. Yeah, that one does need to be added in there.
Okay, so we'll need to add that.
Yes.
The, the lighting, did we, do we have it in there about bowler lighting or do we need to put that in there?
I think we could just put that the, the lighting, we have a standard.
Right.
Condition.
Right, the 25.
We use the same one.
Right. What that is, is that the lighting is cut back to 25% of its normal illumination within two hours of the regular closing time. So like only one light out of four would be lit in the parking lot. That's enough to give you illumination, but so that you really won't have any spillover and the folks in their backyards can use their telescopes to see the stars. I do have a couple of questions actually for the, for the engineer that's going to, that's working on the building. And these are, I'm sorry, I'm just curious. I noticed in the drawings, there's a garage door. Is that just for like a patio access?
Yeah, and I know during the day they'll be doing, when it's nice out, they'll have activities inside. They just like to have that door open, just kind of bring the outside in for.
That's kind of what I figured. I didn't figure it was bus maintenance.
Yeah.
But I was just curious. And my second question is, the high roof on that section of the building, is that too mostly for mechanical or do you actually have storage space up there or what?
Um, just more for the, the look of the building. Yeah.
It makes it look very nice. I, I'm real impressed with the, the design y'all came up with.
Yeah, thank you.
It's definitely an asset to the community.
We think so.
It's not the box. We don't like boxes around here.
Yeah, yeah.
And one other question for either of you. Is this a seven-day operation or weekdays only? Five days?
However, there might be some special activities on a Saturday.
Okay, okay. Just, just curious, but it's, it's primarily five-day with possible weekend occasionally. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, second helpings? Okay, I need a motion, keeping in mind that we just added a condition.
Do we need the two different motions?
Correct.
Need a motion to add the condition.
Well, yeah, let's do a motion to add the condition, which will be in the SSP.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to add conditional use 1120 to PUD 96-4 SSP number five.
Right, this is for the SSP.
That's what I'm doing, adding the conditional use 1122 to the PUD and binding that minimal vote on the whole package.
Yes.
Do we need a motion just for the conditional use?
Correct.
So just for the, not to add it?
Yeah, just.
To approve the conditional use.
Oh, we need, we need to do that first?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah. Before we vote, start anything on the other.
Sorry about that.
Case, case it fails.
Then it becomes a moot point.
Exactly.
Got it, okay.
Hit the rewind button here. Mr. Chair, I move to approve conditional use 1120.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, a second.
Okay. And make it official and read the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 4-0. Now we'll need to add the condition to the SSP. So.
So Mr. Chair, I move to, I move to bind CU 1120 to PUD 96-4 SSP number five. We're to add the condition.
Add condition 13?
Add a 13th condition, yes.
Right. And that would be to, to reduce the lighting to 25% of normal.
Boilerplate.
Right. After, within two hours after closing.
Yes.
Okay. You got that, Melissa?
I got it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, a second?
You second that, okay? And I will just ask for a, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Okay, that carries. Now I need a motion for approval. We'll charge through this one way or the other. Don't be shy.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PUD, PUD 96-4 SSP number five with 13 conditions.
Mr. Chair, I second the motion.
And we have a second. Okay, now we'll vote on that, and we'll do that by roll call.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries 4-0. We're looking forward to seeing things getting underway once it's approved by council.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you especially. This is a nice birthday present.
Happy birthday.
Thank you for the birthday present from Beaver Creek.
Excellent. Well, we're, we're looking forward to seeing the operation, and you got some serendipity tonight.
Right, exactly.
Okay, we have one decision item that's still to go, and that is?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PUD 15-3 Rapid Fire Pizza. This is a minor modification to the existing site plan. What the applicant's looking to do is install a customer pickup window on the western end, western end of the south side of the building. It's a multi-tenant building and they occupy the westernmost tenant space. And this building's located in pretty much central Beaver Creek. It was approved as a PUD in 2015, and I believe the, the overall PUD included the AAA auto, and they kind of inter, intermingle in the parking lots, but this building was built second. I believe it was approved in 2017. It was set up so that there would be a parking, a drive-through parking window here on the eastern end. But again, with four tenants, you know, this westernmost tenant doesn't have access to that far pickup lane design, or I'm sorry, drive-through lane design. As planning commission may be aware, and I sent a few articles to the fact, this global pandemic, it's actually caused, and we've seen it, if you've gone past a few of our drive-throughs that might not normally be completely busy, you've seen a lot of drive-through traffic because, and I've seen articles on, it's not just Beaver Creek, it's happening too, that, you know, people are staying in their car and ordering and picking it up or going to the place ordering it in their car and going through the drive-through lane. And in an attempt to help Rapid Fire continue to evolve their business plan, you know, we didn't, we didn't want to, we knew it wasn't set up for a drive-through at this location. I mean, it's not. The, the traffic patterns of cars stacking up would be problematic with the site as it's laid out. So what we're proposing and what, and what we recommend is a pickup window be located at this southeast corner. And signed in such a way that they can't have more than three cars stacking. And then where the area is labeled red, that would be labeled for no stacking, no waiting, no parking, because we don't want to get to the point, hey, well, the, first of all, if you did have cars stacking here, there would be no room for cars in this parking lot to back out. So if they do need to extend that at all, there is a condition, if they do need to extend that, then they would have to reconfigure this parking to be 30-degree or 60-degree angle parking where you only need the 10-foot driveline. But most importantly, we don't, we don't want to see cars stacking and blocking the flow of traffic exiting the site. Also, you wouldn't want to see cars stacking out on the North Fairfield Road. That's, that's the, that, that would be the most concerning cause if this was a traditional drive-through, because Dunkin' Donuts was set up with more than required stacking for a drive-through, but anybody who's gone there has seen that, you know, as of late, it's been better because the second drive-through window has opened. But if you, if you went there a few months ago, you would have seen that, you know, minimum requirements in the code is still not enough with the current situation that we've got. The more people are wanting to use drive-through, they don't want to go in. They want to socially distance by picking stuff up. So we're recommending approval, and this being, again, a sensitive area, we, we did add conditions that it be pickup only, that they can't have menu boards on the outside, that again, that those areas should be delineated between the no parking area and the pickup area. We also add, added a condition that the owner is, you know, and this goes without saying, but I wanted to reiterate that condition, that the owner is, is, you know, required to ensure this compliance, that, you know, if they do have cars waiting in that area, they need to come out, out of the building and tell them to go park in a parking space, their food's not ready, or tell them to park, we'll bring it out to you, or however they want to operate that. But we want to ensure that, you know, that happens. And there is a caveat that, you know, if there's repeated violation of that or if it becomes a problem, you know, city does have full authority to require them to cease window, operation at the window. We don't want to do that, but we at least need to have that as an option if it did become a problem. But, you know, I think that this would be a good thing. We keep it down to a few cars and, and the owner, you know, again, they're required to make sure that that happens. I think that, you know, this is a good alternative way to bring business to the, to the Rapid Fire business, Rapid Fire Pizza, and, and help business out any way we can in these unprecedented times. But again, I recommend, staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request. This is a minor mod, so the applicant is here if you have any questions, but I'm here to answer them as well. So, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, if we can help out any of our small businesses now, certainly wanted to do that. Gentlemen, I'm just going to throw this open to questions, comments. We got the folks here. They didn't bring any pizzas, but we got them here.
I didn't, I didn't mention the pizza part. You blame me, I forgot that part.
So questions, gentlemen?
I, I do have a quick question for the applicant. What were you?
You can go ahead.
Good. So I understand a traditional pizza place, why you'd want to, because we have all these restrictions with menu boards and all the ordering and all this other stuff, but that's exactly what you would want in your style of pizza chain versus like when I call Pizza Chain X and it's 20 minutes. You guys are, you know, their whole thing is rapid fire, right? So I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to kind of rectify how, I don't know, I guess I'm trying to figure out, you're going to probably have a lot of drive-up orders.
Yeah, well, first Ray Wiley, 748 Ford Road, Zena, Ohio. I, I see what you're saying, great point, but ours takes about three minutes to cook, so that's a little bit longer than a drive-through would really work for very well.
Yeah, sure.
But, so a lot of people do online order, call ahead, you know, that kind of thing. They just come in, they roll up, pick up the, you know, and they're gone. So it, it's, that's the whole focus.
Will you guys accept verbal orders as they come through the window? Like if somebody just pulls up and goes, hey, man, give me a personal pepper?
No, no.
Not if it's going to cause a problem, you know? We don't want to violate any of our agreements with you, but no, I don't think so.
Yeah, this is, our, our intent would be to, and Kelly Gray, 748 Ford Road, Zena, our intent would be to have our signage that says this is an online order pickup only. We would expect them to do that. You know, we have a good relationship with our landlord, Jared Barnett, Mills Morgan Synergy. The thought is, if it became a problem, we may do some signage on designated parking spots, park here, place your order, and when it's ready, come through the window, because we don't want people stacking. That's a concern for you. We, we want to promote the fast, you know, and, and the real challenge that we're having is, you know, people not wanting to come into restaurants, you know? And we have a decline in sales in this restaurant, and by offering this service, we think we can get back up to our pre-COVID sales.
Okay, and, and like I said, I'm more, just was really just kind of, you know, understanding how you'd want to do that at like Godfather's Pizza, or you don't want to get out, but you got to call 25 minutes ahead, but here, you know, it's ready 30 minutes.
I think the mom with the three kids, she doesn't want to ever get out of her car, so.
Yeah, this way, you just do an online order, you know, five minutes ahead.
Gotcha, gotcha. No, like I said, just more of a curiosity than anything, nearly not worried. I'm sure that the city and the landlord will, then you guys will enforce stacking, so.
Yep.
There's not a lot of extra room in there anyways, to stack a bunch of cars, so, no, that was, that was my only question. I appreciate it.
So you said you were going to put up signage that says this? Where would that signage be?
Yeah, no menu boards, because that's not permitted, but obviously we have to tell people somehow where that is, so just more of a small directional, we have an existing patio. I mean, we'll work with staff on whatever you guys will permit us to do, but not, you know, no flashy neon or anything like that.
Don't you worry about that.
Just cover pickup, follow up, something like that.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And I think the way that Steph had, had, had recommended it was, was on the pavement, which is great, but I think maybe a small directional sign that's similar to like a handicap parking sign on the end of the patio, just directional to say, online order pickup here. And I think that'll solve that, that issue versus, you know, people driving around.
Awesome. And then one question for staff. So you pointed out that the other side of the building has a drive-through, and I know that's currently a Verizon, I believe, right?
It, it was designed originally for a drive-through.
So.
But it does not have a drive-through.
Oh, it does not have?
It does not have a drive-through. It was just, when this was designed, they were anticipating the tenant on the east end to need a drive-through, which didn't come to fruition. So the tenant on the west end is just not set up. The, the site is not set up for a traditional drive-through, which is why, at first I was nervous, and I was hesitant to recommend approval, but then when we went through a lot of the iterations and, and worked with staff and landowner, or worked with the applicant and the landowner, we got to the point where I think I'm, I'm comfortable recommending with the drive, pickup only as long as it's clearly marked, our cars can't wait.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have an issue if, you know, that tenant ever changes and wants a drive-through, and now we have these two drive-throughs competing and, so.
Well.
You know, just with the space.
I wouldn't want to stop competition between two businesses, but we would make sure that they wouldn't, and they wouldn't cause traffic in.
That, that.
Head on collision.
Head-on collisions would be.
But the drive-through would be set up to where it would just go past it and it would just have to be, you know, the applicant, or the owner would figure out how to, you know, get that second lane around.
Okay, thank you.
Took my question, I've got none.
I was looking at that and I thought, geez, you go around the other direction, until one of my fellow commissioners pointed out, unless you have a right-hand drive car, you be on the wrong side.
You can do a bank teller, you can have it come down.
However.
The burritos would work. The burritos down the toilet.
Burritos, right. Through the sunroof, just toss them. It did occur to me though, that at, one of your competitors that is a, either a boy's or a girl's name, they actually walk out, that would be Marion's. They actually walk out with your order, because most of the Marion's don't have a drive-in window. And it occurred to me, if you had someone who would walk the pizza out through a door rather than a window, you could go in the other direction and have plenty of stacking space without having to worry about impinging on the parking lot. But that would be up to, up to the owner, whether you have enough staff to have somebody who could actually walk out with the pizza.
I think that would be like a second, if this doesn't work out the way that they, you know, if they're finding that, you know, there's repeat.
They just saw the hole bigger. Actually, there's probably a door back there anyway, isn't there?
Right.
Okay.
I think they want to go with this option first, and if it doesn't work, then, you know, that would be the next level.
Okay, it's just another, just another thought, because you could stack a lot more cars around the other direction.
True.
So, just a thought. Other than that, once again, if we can help out our, our local businesses and local business people, got a tough enough time as it is without making it more difficult, so, please. You have, you have a devoted TV audience, so it needs you to speak into the microphone.
So going with your train of thought there, in theory, we could run the drive-through the other direction.
Oh, and just have people roll down their passenger side window?
No, I guess that wouldn't work. We'd have to have the employee come and bring it out.
Yeah.
But we could run it the other direction and do what you're saying, have the employee go out and give them their product, because we have a, well, I think there's a door right there, but we also have the side door on the patio. I mean, would it, if we were to say, hey, we'll bring you your pizza over by that patio, would that might, obviously we'd need to resubmit for that, but I mean, just throwing it out there.
Operationally, it would work for us because of the way the employee has to come.
They walk through the cut station, out that door, hand it to them in the red, they'd be in the red, or we could just hand it to them through the window, we're putting in the back of the building.
Well.
Which then it doesn't affect it really much.
If, I'm sure you all want to initiate this sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
So why don't we, why don't we say, try this out, let's see if it works, and if the stacking really becomes a problem, we can revisit it. It would be very easy, you just move your signs around, basically.
Right, we just cut that window into a door.
Exactly.
And the employee can walk right out there and hand it to them in their car.
Is, staff, do you have a problem with that? If they, if they decide that, or, or it looks like this, I think the only problem is going to be the possibility of stacking.
And we're not looking for approval on that today, just throwing it out there.
Right.
It can be an option. I mean, I don't think we need to come back to this board.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to avoid, having to go back through planning commission again if they want to come around the east side of the building instead of the west side.
I think it's just the concept of you guys, I just wanted to bring the concept forward.
Right.
The final details can be.
It's up to you guys.
Worked out.
Good, good. Wanted, I know you all want to do this as quickly as you can.
Sure.